And for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first item on our workshop agenda today are policy updates. Dr. Balgman?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the audience. Good afternoon to all of you and those of you listening at home. At this time, I would like to ask our Board Attorney slash General Counsel, Dr. Evans, to present to you, there are several, as you know, Madam Chair and Board Members, we have started updating our policies about two years ago. And Dr. Evans and staff has worked on some of the policies. He's here to share those policies with you, obtain input, and go back and craft and get it ready for the next step. So, Dr. Evans?
Thank you, Board Chair, members of the Board, Superintendent Balgman. As the Superintendent stated, we're here to look at a few of our policies. As she stated, the departments and myself have gone through these policies, looked at them, and we're offering or recommended suggested changes. And we're going to also ask for your input during this workshop to see if there are any things you would like to add or to delete regarding the policies that we have listed. The first policy is Policy 610, and it's naming school facilities. And the one change that we are recommending and would like to discuss is adding to the paragraph "or approval of contracts." And it reads specifically, "The names of those persons in office at the time of the school board's approval of the building plan or approval of contracts shall be included on the dedication plaque unless otherwise determined by the school board." And this recommendation is coming from Ms. Patty Core. Is there any discussion or any suggestions regarding this particular policy?
Mr. Cologne?
So, the only thing that I would add to this that we have learned in the past is, rather than delegated authority, I think the Superintendent should be the one to sign off on the final plaque. Typically, the vendor will send it to the construction department and for approval. And so, I'd like to propose that, you know, I mean, the plaque is forever, and in one of our schools, we ended up having to get it redone because it was not as, though the construction department, I'll add, followed every rule that we had, it wasn't necessarily accurate, and we didn't catch that until later. So, you know, the plaque is forever, and so, I'd like to see something in there added where the Superintendent will provide the final approval for the plaque language.
Thank you, Mr. Cologne, that is noted here.
And again, and no fault of the construction department, I just think it was just, you know, varying opinions on what should and shouldn't be on there at the time.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on to Policy 702, which is our purchasing policy, and we're trying, we're recommending to rename that to procurement. There are several changes that we are suggesting here in this particular policy. The Superintendent's designee authority and limits for purchasing, those things are highlighted there in red, along with some other items regarding prices and increase, competitive solicitation amounts increases as well. So, in essence, we're really trying to up the threshold for a lot of these amounts due to inflation and for efficiency with school board administration and staff. And if you have any questions regarding Policy 702, we do have Dietrich Wittenberger here, who is in charge of our finance department, speaking for Mr. Todd Cease. Any questions?
Yes, there are. Ms. Brosmaier?
Um, I just had...
If I may?
Sorry.
I'm going to ask Dietrich if she would come to the podium.
Yes, both. Hi, I just have a couple of questions. On Section D, first of all, I greatly understand and agree with the need to expand the spending authority because it hasn't been updated and everything costs more, and you need that level of flexibility. The only thing that concerned me was that these numbers can add up pretty quickly. And I wondered if, and I would be interested in anybody else's thoughts about this, I wondered if there's a point, not where you need to ask for permission, but just to report back, like if we start to get a cumulative amount of $1 million that has been spent with this expanded authority, is there a point where it wouldn't be a bad idea for the Board to be aware of those expenditures since they were offline or off budget anyway? Just as a point of information? That's one question.
Okay, I'm happy to answer. So, we actually look at things cumulatively, and that is referred to in the policy. We also look at that when we're looking at competitive solicitations. So, the thresholds that we're proposing will allow us to align with some of our neighboring counties, as well as we are looking at them cumulatively by vendor, by fiscal year. So, then the numbers that you're seeing there, the Superintendent, if we were to have, say, multiple contracts that now exceed her authority limit, we would bring them forward to the Board?
I do understand that, and I appreciate that explanation. What I'm thinking is that there are a number of categories with expanded authorizations, and when those are pulled together, that can add up pretty quickly. So, that's why I wondered if there's a point where it wouldn't be a bad idea to just update the Board as an information item, to let us know that there has been additional money spent past a certain point, and I don't know, $1 million sticks in my head, but it doesn't have to be that. I'm just wondering if there's a point where we should know that more than we anticipated is being spent for whatever reason?
Are you referring to if it goes over a certain budgeted item, not necessarily the vendor as a whole? Like, if I say we budgeted $1 million for this product, and it was only being increased by a certain amount, but now we're going over that line item in the budget?
I'm not sure.
Okay. I'm just trying to answer.
And that's why we're here today, so, that's awesome.
Question?
Yes.
Would that go along with what we, when we discuss change orders? When there's a change order?
Right, so, if the item has already come forward to the Board because the current amount, $50,000, right now, we're bringing forward any change to that contract. We would continue that process. We have added in a potential change to the policy that would allow our Superintendent to approve 10% or $25,000 to a contract change order. And if it were to exceed that, then we would bring it forward to the Board again. Another example of what I think you might be asking for is actually HR. So, HR has designated authority for you to sign, however, they still bring forward a spreadsheet to the Board as a notification of these are all of the contracts and expected spend, and I would be happy for us to provide that to you. It'd be in conjunction with our planning and facilities team, since they handle some of their own competitive solicitations. But we definitely would be happy to keep the Board informed, whether that be like on a quarterly basis or an annual basis.
Okay, that sounds like what I mean.
Yep.
And the difficulty for me was I was trying to figure out if the expanded authorities applied to budgeted items, or were these over and above what was already budgeted? And that's probably a distinction that would make a difference for your reporting purposes, but what you're describing that you do with HR sounds like what I'm aiming for. So, thank you for that, I appreciate that very much. My only other question is on Section G, where it says unless waived. That strikes me as, unless we have criteria for waivers, that strikes me as potential, a potential problem, or it could raise potential problems. So, I wondered if there's a criteria for waivers?
And there is. So, the authority would be given to me to make that waiver. However, I would only use that if the item is exempt per the Florida Administrative Code from the competitive bid solicitation. And some of those examples are professional services, which list out several items, including auditing services, legal services. Then you have educational materials and copyrighted materials. And then, we already have an emergency purchase process in place, but that is also exempt from the bid process because we don't want something to cause further damage or financial strain on the district. Also, grants sometimes specify the vendor that we have to use. And then, the last couple of items are technology items, which the Florida statute 282.0041 has a list of items that are exempt from the bid process. And lastly, insurance. And so, only those items would be waived.
Okay, so, the exemptions and the waivers are essentially the same thing?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Mr. Cologne?
I have more questions than Donna does. And so, you know, we reviewed this policy a year ago and updated it, unlike many of our other policies. And so, in this policy, we're adding coordinators and supervisors with a limit up to $5,000 that may be extended with a cabinet member or the Superintendent. Can you give me an example of why we need to add that layer and the hardship that these folks may have to get to their directors to sign? In other words, we're delegating an authority up to 5,000 without that? So, why is this necessary, and what kind of expenses would be a part of this ask?
So, one example would be the CTE department. Currently, that is a coordinator...
I can barely hear you. You gotta be loud, sorry.
All right. One example would be, we have certain departments that do not have a director over them, and they report to an executive director or a cabinet-level member. And it's really just to expedite some of the purchases for our students. So, CTE purchases a lot of equipment for ag and student needs, and right now, they do not have the authority to approve even up to $5,000 for that purchase. So, we're delaying in getting some items to students, and we just want to make sure we're utilizing our funds. So, this is just increase, adding somebody who does not have authority right now, and to a very small level, but so that we can get resources. Anything under 5,000 is usually a material in supply, so it doesn't normally have to be inventoried or tracked. It's not a large purchase, it's not a capital or non-capital equipment.
Okay. Now, the second line, number two, D2, ups the amount for the principals. And so, currently, the directors have a, executive directors can go up to...
Currently, executive directors don't have any authority, so it goes from cabinet member to superintendent. So, the executive director is in addition, similar to the coordinators and supervisors.
So, can you give me an example of a time that a principal has had an amount that they could not get the approval? I'm trying to figure out what the catalyst for the ask is, and what the burden would be to not expand it, you know, what is it that's causing the difficulty right now? And so, from, at the principal level, what are examples of times where this is an issue?
Yes, so, events is a big one. So, field trips and proms has been probably our largest area. Sometimes, the hotel will sell that space out underneath you if the contract's not signed in a very timely manner. Field trips, if tickets aren't bought in a timely manner. And so, having to go those additional steps to either a cabinet member or to the Board or Superintendent has caused delays and ultimately changed their event programs. Some other additional discussions we've had with principals have expressed music and theater purchases being delayed, which may change their onsite school programs. And then, athletics is another big area. So, sometimes, you don't know till the end of the season that you may be going to the playoffs or something like that. And so, booking your charter buses and hotel stays and things of that nature ultimately are last minute. The other example I think is a big one is grants. Sometimes, you get your grant approved, and you have a short amount of time to spend that money, and you have to actually receive the item in order for the grant to cover that expense. And so, there, by having to do a competitive solicitation and/or obtain additional approvals can delay the spending, and then ultimately, we're giving that money back.
You mentioned grants. Is that exclusive just to us, or does that include charters, private, all of...
The grant deadlines are exclusive to everybody that the grant covers. So, private schools, charter schools, anybody who is a stakeholder.
And have we had any delays in serving those folks because we've had to wait to get signatures from the next level up?
Delays, yes. To my knowledge, we have never not purchased an item that they have requested, but maybe they did not get it in a timely manner where they could really implement with fidelity. So, we really want to make sure we're implementing our federal funds specifically with fidelity, which means getting the resources in the hands of students as quickly as possible. So, an extra site license for a student that was not budgeted. We do a grant amendment, they approve it, but now we have to wait for it to go to the Board because it's an increase. So, this would help expedite that.
So, at the, so, number three, we're adding executive directors, which we just talked about. So, cabinet members going up to 50,000. What, can you give me examples of why this is necessary?
So, in our previous processes, if you will, we had area superintendents, and you'll actually see that listed in our policy. So, they're replacing that role, and we felt that it was necessary to give them some authority level when it came to purchases. And ultimately, we have tried to line this up with some of our neighboring districts who allow different levels of authority. So, as an example, Seminole County actually allows their principals to sign up to 25,000. So, we're still trying to be restrictive and not open the gates up too much, but to allow those that are in a position of authority to have the appropriate signature level as well. So, we don't really have an example for what you're asking about a cabinet member level not having a signature, but just making sure they're included in the approval process. And a lot of it is, as it goes up higher, we want to make sure all of the correct and appropriate members are also reviewing it before it gets to the next level. So, including them in those conversations as well, as far as the funding.
Okay, and then, number five, Superintendent. So, we're talking about going to $100,000. And I want to point out, this is not about people, this is about policy. Soon, we may not be all sitting here, and so, this is no reflection on the individual. But my question is, have we ever had a time that the $50,000 current amount? Now, mind you, if we were to approve this as presented, it would make absolute sense just because we're going from 5,000 to 20,000 to 50,000. And so, if we decide that we want to implement cabinet members to have approval up to 50,000, then it would make sense that the Superintendent subsequently could go to 100. That kind of makes sense. But I want to understand, what examples do we have of times when that amount has been difficult and may have caused a delay because they have to wait for the next Board meeting in order to get something approved?
So, we have some current examples happening with CTE and Dr. Vaya's area, particularly with industry certifications. So, one example would be our culinary students and teachers have to have annual certifications. And because the expected spend district-wide is 80,000, we've had to tell them we cannot make those purchases right now until we bring that agreement forth to the Board. They have a list of nine different certifications that we're in that same boat currently.
So, that would give the Superintendent the ability to approve that. Consultants, and I understand that that's just consistency. Construction, up to $325,000. And so, that one was very hard for me to understand, and so, just for continuity, I would suggest if, you know, and of course, I'm throwing this out at my colleagues, that we just keep that Superintendent amount at $100,000, and then everything else come before us, exceeding that 100,000, because then that will even that. So, that's just my suggestion. Now, the change orders, and I'm almost done, I promise, change orders up to 10% and $25,000, whichever is less, is that cumulatively, or is that by change order?
That would be independently per change order.
Per change order. So, if you have lots of change orders on an amount, then that would not fall under, that would fall under that. So, you could exceed it, just because, like your point, it would add up, and we would never know. I can't think of a time in the six years where change orders have been of issue. Do we have examples? And I guess, I guess, construction would probably be, Patty, if you're listening, we're on change orders. I think construction is probably the largest part of that change order, because that's what, the most change orders that we see. Do we have examples of a time when this has become an issue to get before the Board, seeing that all change orders, positive and negative? And that's the irony, too, is even the positive ones, where we are making money because we did an owner purchase, that has to come to us, too. And so, I guess my second question, so, first question is examples of when this has become an issue? And second question is, can we, if we don't consider that, can we just make, where the Superintendent can approve, the positive change orders? Although, I do like seeing them, to be honest with you, because I like to see that we made $40,000 instead of, you know, because otherwise, we wouldn't ever get that excitement. But, so, I take that back. So, it just, you see it, and it's positive. You know, we save money. I like saving money.
Change orders aren't generally a problem for us, because we bring them all to the Board, positive or negative. I think one of the things this, these changes could help the most would be in the maintenance area. To change, we don't have very many schools that are DX systems anymore, most of them are chillers. But the schools that do have DX systems, a small DX can cost $36,000 just for one classroom, for one DX system. And with their current limits, they can't, they can't do it, so, without getting permission from somebody.
So, if we take cabinet members, which would be Patty, she could go up to $50,000.
That's correct.
And so, help me understand why that is necessary, the change order one? Like, what's the barrier? I'm trying to understand why we're, why you're asking for this.
May I add something for a moment, if you don't mind?
No, no, by...
So, I talked to them also about this section, and so, when they're saying that one of those costs $36,000, typically, when the chiller goes down, it takes a whole building down, it doesn't take a single classroom down. So, what he's saying is, one classroom, they would need 36. But if you've got 10 classrooms in that building, and you've got to get them back up with air immediately, because you can't have kids, we know, for most of our school year, sitting in a room, they don't have the authority to be able to bring in what they need. But the other thing, because we were talking about Stark yesterday, is Stark is slightly behind on their schedule, and I kept asking why. I went out and toured the facility, trying to figure out why they were behind, and then I find out it had to do with dirt. And we lost, we had secured dirt that was needed to bring in to level Stark out, and while they were waiting to get the process to us to approve, we lost the dirt. And so, then they had to go back through the process and find another way in which to get the dirt, and so, that's what put that school behind.
That's a very good example, and we end up paying more for the dirt the second time.
Okay, I'm sold.
Dr. Kuhn, hold on, I don't, I don't want to cut Dr. Kuhn short. He does have an example that he would like to provide, since you were asking for examples.
I'm sorry, guys, I have a lot of questions.
We could provide quite a few.
I'll give you one last little example here. You know, often, we're criticized as government for not being quick and efficient as much as business can be, and it's often because of these slowdowns in our decision-making process. There's often windows that we need to get into, so I'll give you one of those windows for instance. Last spring, we were approved for Title I funding for installations of interactive flat panels. We obviously want to do those installations when kids are not in the classroom. So, we were scheduled to do that during the summertime, but of course, the cost went over the threshold, and you guys don't meet a lot during the summertime. So, we lost the window of summer installations for interactive flat panels when kids would not have been disrupted. Now, we're paying overtime on weekends to install those when we could have done it during the summer. And that's just one example of where often, we miss a window because of a slowdown in the approval process.
Okay, I'm sold. And I, oh, informal quote, so, we're taking it where we don't need a contract. Explain that to me, where we don't need a contract if it's less than $20,000?
Yes, so, our current process is anything from $10,000 to $20,000, essentially. The department or school has the authority to go get their own quotes. They must provide those quotes to procurement, and then we vet those to make sure they're apples to apples, essentially, that one didn't forget maybe installation or delivery. And then, we move forward with the purchase process. We are suggesting an increase to that. Again, we've given prom and some other examples, as it's essentially impossible to, for some of our larger schools, to host those types of events for under the $10,000 mark. So, we are suggesting raising that from $20,000 to $35,000, which is actually still less than the state statute requires. They require competitive formal bids at 50,000. So, we still want to have some brackets underneath the 50,000 where procurement has oversight of those purchases. And so, I don't know quite sure if you're also referring to the waiver that Ms. Brosmaier also discussed, but we don't require a contract for those lower dollar, in our eyes, lower dollar purchases. So, again, unless it's waived from the competitive process, we would still require the informal process to be done. Anything over 35,000 would come through the procurement office, where we post the bid online for a set amount of days, and then we get proposals submitted through that process.
What are examples where this would apply to?
Prom is a good one, so the hotels. Really, it can apply to anything, though, if our expected annual spend with that vendor would be less than the new value of 35,000.
Would this include software, textbooks?
Software is exempt from the bid process per Florida statute. So, we don't have to bid those, but often, you'll find, like with our new ERP system focus, we wanted to see what the market had to offer and get competitive pricing on those.
All the questions I have?
That's good, Rich.
Yeah, I just had a question to follow up on Mr. Cologne. So, he asked us on D5C to take the construction amount of 325,000 and reduce it to 100,000. So, my question is, is there a reason it was 325,000 and not 100,000? twenty-five thousand and not a hundred? I would imagine there was.
Yes. So a Florida statute, two eighty-seven point zero five five, goes over the CCNA process. And that outlines that a competitive solicitation is not required for construction unless it meets that three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar threshold. So we were just trying to align with Florida statute. I also believe, and I'd rely on Dr. Evans, that one of our construction policies has a different value as well there. So we are just trying to get all of our policies aligned internally as well.
And we're going to update that policy to make sure it's one price.
Anything else?
That's it? That's all I had?
So how we got here on some of these items, Mr. Cologne and I were on the board when the tornadoes went through to land and did a lot of destruction. And they had to immediately bring people in, because individuals couldn't get out. They couldn't get out of the parking lots and things like that. So that's why under E, well, actually, it goes down there, and it says, you know, for the emergency purchases that are consistent, we can, you know, do that. Because there was no time, like when the tornadoes went through, that you could call a board meeting and say, we need to spend. And it was a large amount of money that needed to be spent to remove those trees, to get people that were trapped out of that piece. But we also came onto this board during a time when they had updated the new policies on purchasing for, and the contract amendment pieces, because there was a time when there was no oversight on that piece. And I agree with you. I like seeing when we're saving the money as well, you know, on a contract amendment, as well as when sometimes we have to put out a little bit more, because the cost has gone up, or we've lost the ability to purchase it from that person. So having worked where Deirdre just recently worked in federal programs, this process has been in place for a long time. I mean, when I was there, I was the first signature on any of those things, and it went to the next level, and a Deirdre knows. And you take it all the way up through all of the levels until it gets to the board. I personally, because I know what the cost have happened, and they've gone up, and we have kept people where they've lost things, and then it costs us more money, I personally don't have a problem with this, as long as it's followed, and the right signatures are on there. But I do believe, as a board member, I will say on the one line, I wish you would go back down to, on number four, for cabinet members, which is new. I think you need to put back in the forty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine, which shows up on all of the forms that have to be signed, since fifty thousand dollars is the threshold for when it comes here. I just want to be kept informed when you're spending over that amount, and that it come to the board, so that we know what is happening, and we see it, and we give approval. But if we follow the rules that are already given to us, and the updates each year, I don't have a problem with any of this. And I know it took a lot of work for you to figure it out, and how we can move forward. And so thank you, and thank you for all the examples that you brought, because there's been a lot of times where we've been the barrier, not because we chose to be the barrier, but we've kept schools from being able to move forward with what they need to do for students. So thank you.
So again, for that, for cabinet members, you want it changed back to forty-nine nine ninety-nine? Is that the consensus?
The minute you hit fifty, the rules are, it's board approval, except for in those unique situations.
Okay. Well, it would then go to the, it would go to the superintendent after that.
Right. And the proposed changes, the cabinet member would be able to sign up to fifty thousand, and now from fifty, fifty to one hundred thousand, our superintendent can sign. Going forward, if we accept these changes, the board would see contracts with a value of a hundred thousand. Now, an example of where maybe we had an initial contract at eighty thousand that the superintendent has signed, and now we need to add fifty thousand to it, we're bringing it forward to the board, because we've both exceeded the ten percent or twenty-five thousand, and the one hundred thousand.
Cumulative?
Huh?
Cumulative.
Cumulative. And just as information, a hundred thousand on everything for the superintendent, number five, correct? So we're changing to three twenty-five to a hundred thousand. Is that the consensus?
I don't think it's a consensus yet.
I don't think, no.
You guys, can we discuss it?
What's your input?
So I was satisfied with the reason of why it's three twenty-five, to be in line with Florida state statutes. So I would say we'd leave it at the three twenty-five.
Hey, but I thought...
Okay. But if you look at letter E, under the part that we've been looking at with just the numbers, it says, all purchases of commodities and contractual services with a value of fifty thousand or more per fiscal year shall be authorized by the school board with the following exception. And the only exception, and we did put this exception in there after the tornadoes went through, was for the emergency purchases.
Where are you, Jamie?
No, yeah.
Where are you?
Where are you?
I'm, okay, it starts on the bottom of page three, letter E.
And I would like to add, I believe this is an oversight on our part, where that dollar amount of fifty thousand should have also been changed to a hundred thousand to match Section D, number five.
Okay. Because see, when I read all of it...
That should be stricken through.
Released. I still was like, well, we're still okay, because we're going with letter E. So even when these things have to happen up above, and that's what I was referencing, why I thought the cabinet member should read like it's always read for the superintendent, which was forty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. So you're now saying, under Section E, you want to change that to the value of a hundred thousand.
Correct, which would match Section D, number five.
We wouldn't see anything under...
We wouldn't see anything under a hundred thousand. That I struggle with personally.
So let me share this with you. This is your policy. This is your wheelhouse right here. So whatever the staff has prepared, it's, it's, it's just sharing with you, and you provide your input, because you have to feel good about this.
Mr. Cologne?
Can we add to this a mechanism of notification? So, I mean, trying to find the happy medium here, because, you know, a hundred thousand dollars at a time can add up to a million, can add up to two million. And while I, you know, obviously, we don't have money sitting in the bottom drawer, so it's got to be budgeted, it's got to be allocated, it's got to be, you know, for the most part, under normal circumstances. So where we would not stop the approval of the purchase, is there a mechanism where we could be informed of it? In other words, just out of, what's the word I'd use?
Courtesy.
Out of courtesy, and which gives us the ability to ask questions, not because we don't approve of it, because we're extending to a hundred thousand, but at least we would be aware of the expenditure that exceeds fifty thousand. In other words, between fifty and a hundred thousand. I don't know how much work that would add. Is that...
I think that's what Ms. Brosmeyer was asking as well. So perhaps, I thought we were going to do something monthly or quarterly to bring those things to the board for informational purposes only.
I'm a hundred percent in agreement. That sounds like a great idea to me.
And it doesn't even have to be formally brought on agenda, any of that. It's just the SOP part of it, not necessarily the policy side of it.
I'll also want to give Vice Chair Haynes the information that we did...
Chair Haynes.
Chair Haynes. We did survey other districts here in the state. And you have two of our neighboring, Seminole is at a hundred thousand, and Lake County is now at two hundred thousand. And then within the state, we have two other examples of a hundred thousand. That's Clay County and Bay District County schools. And then Palm Beach County is at two hundred and fifty thousand. So we're aligning, if you will, with other districts, but still not meeting the cap that some other districts have made for themselves.
Ms. Goodrich?
So when was the last time these numbers were updated? I know we said it's been a while, but let's look at that date, because cost of change, as we're not even at the state levels, or it sounds like even close. So I know a hundred thousand dollars sounds like a lot, because to individuals, it's a lot of money. But I don't know that an organization this size, I feel like it's really not that large of a number, that we can't stay on top of it with a quarterly reporting of coming and letting us know, hey, this is what was spent. So if it's being misspent for any reason, then we can review the policy again. But at the same time, we're cutting a lot of red tape, which is what tends to slow down things from happening in government.
I think this policy was updated in June of 2024, but I don't think the thresholds were addressed at that time.
The only piece updated was the emergency piece.
But do we know when the thresholds were updated last?
There's a history here, but...
Right, nineteen oh two.
I can, I can tell, I can tell you...
Well, the last change prior to that was 2015, April of 2015. But I cannot confirm if thresholds were changed at that time. So it's been at least roughly a decade.
So at least a decade. And so I think that the world in general is very well aware of the cost of living for all of us, and everything we purchase, everything we do. And I, I would love to still be purchasing things at 2015 prices, but that's not a reality. So...
I can tell you, fifteen years ago, these were the amounts, because I was, I had to sign off on them in federal programs and grants. And so these amounts, fifteen years ago, these were the amounts.
But the eggs are going to get cheaper, so it's okay. There's hope.
Hopefully.
You sure about that?
Insurance isn't.
Ms. Brosmeyer?
At the risk of sounding like a real moron here, are we still on five, or are we on E?
Well, five and eight.
Five, five, A, B, and C. Okay. Good, because that's where I was aiming. To Mr. Cologne's concern, if I understood you correctly, you're still looking at the three twenty-five and feeling like that is more than it needs to be. And, and I'm inclined to agree with that, only because the statute has to be written to accommodate districts that are a lot bigger than ours, and a lot better funded than ours. And so I think there's a happy medium in there somewhere, maybe one seventy-five instead of three twenty-five, or something like that, where, where we're not at the highest level, but we're trying to, trying to authorize enough flexibility that's appropriate for this size district. And also, I completely agree with the updates, as you know, because I already argued for that. But I think quarterly should be often enough, not, certainly not monthly. And, and I do think it should be an agenda item, at least on the consent agenda, so that the public is notified in the same way that we are. That's all.
Ms. Goodrich?
I would just say, if we're going to consider changing that three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar number, I would like some knowledge as to why we're changing it to what number, and not just an arbitrary, because it sounds big to us. So I'd like to, if we're going to change it, let's do some research as to why we're changing it, and to what number we're changing it to.
Ms. Brosmeyer?
I would only suggest that the three twenty-five may have been arbitrary, too. It's, it's hard to know where that came from. If it's in statute, it may have been the product of, of research that, that legislative staff did. But I'm not sure that, that any figure we come up with is going to have a solid basis. We're trying to figure out what is reasonable in our own budgetary flexibility. And so I'm, I'm not sure that there is research that, that will validate any particular number, any more than Palm Beach County can validate their, their two hundred and fifty thousand. I don't know.
Dr. Evans would like to say something. Is it okay?
Oh, you're good. I took my...
Just a point of clarification. Mr. Cologne, did you say three hundred and twenty-five, or did you want to do one hundred thousand across the board for number five?
I proposed a hundred thousand across the board for number five.
And I believe Ms. Goodrich was the one who said that she...
The three twenty-five.
It's just, yeah, three twenty-five. And I think the reason for the three twenty-five, because that's the statutory limitation when it comes to contracts, construction.
Competitive solicitations for construction.
Donna said one seventy-five.
On the Price is Right.
I hate to bother Patty again, but since this is on construction, how often has it come up that it exceeds three twenty-five, or gets around there? Okay.
I'll come with you.
Because construction is where we spend a lot of our money, and that's where these costs do arise.
Ron wants, Ron, no, it's three twenty-five. Come on.
I just want the reason you know.
That's easy. Come on.
It's rare that anything comes across that's less than a million.
Wow, that was a good answer.
No, it's the truth. I'm, I'm, okay, so I need to ask this. On E, you're going to change that to a hundred thousand. So that was an error, that that part was left at fifty. Okay, I'm fine on construction. I wouldn't be with the other two, but I'm fine on construction with three twenty-five, because everything in construction is priced out. And we have missed out on savings, them waiting to get it to us in order to approve it. And with, when they're having to replace, repair, renovate, and build, I don't want to be the reason why a project gets off schedule while they're waiting for us. That's my personal opinion. Ms. Brosmeyer?
No, I'm sorry. I thought I had taken myself off.
Mr. Cologne?
I can support the three twenty-five. That was a good answer, Ron. Or three twenty-five, three twenty-five?
I'm good with three twenty-five.
Three twenty-five and a dollar?
You're good. All right, we're good there.
Three twenty-five.
But you will make the correction under E?
Yes.
All right.
Correction under E, from fifty to one hundred thousand, three twenty-five is what we're going to, consensus for five C. And we're going to also do quarterly updates to the board on the consent agenda regarding...
Expenditures in that window.
Expenditures. Okay.
I have one thing, because of what Dr. Kuhn brought up, because it is true. His department has to do a lot of their work during the summer, when the kids aren't on campuses. Just like a lot of the construction, big projects are done during the summer, when the kids are not on campuses. Because you can take an entire building's air system down to replace it when the kids aren't there, because we're not impacting them. But his group, they do a lot of technology things during the summer, to bring in new technology, update the technology, and all of that. Is there anything we can do so that he does not fall into the same issue that they fell into this past summer? Because we do that last meeting in July, and then we don't, I mean, in June, and then we don't come back for a meeting until the end of July, because that's also when a lot of people are taking their summer vacation, you know, twelve-month employees. So is there anything that we can do? Because I don't want to see that happen, because now we're paying overtime to employees to come in and work on the weekends, to install equipment that had, they'd been able to install it during the summer. It would have been installed and been ready on day one for kids to use also. So here we are, and kids are not able to use the technology. So how does anybody feel about that? And what could we do with that, Mr. Cologne?
I understand in this policy, and we, I don't know which section it is, but there is a, an area for emergencies, which is what we had to utilize during the hurricanes, where we thought we had to meet, and we didn't, because there was a delegated authority to the superintendent to notify the board meeting, we were going to spend this much, because we needed to. Right now, the superintendent, mind you, she was capped at fifty, now we're going to a hundred, could approve it, and then bring it to the next board meeting. So there was no need to have everybody come in for a hurricane. And so in the case of, one of the conversations that I had with the team was, you know, lack of planning doesn't constitute a state of emergency. And so if it's because someone forgot to submit something on time, and they knew it was coming, that's a different thing. But would that provision cover that, so that the superintendent, I mean, we just doubled the superintendent, arguably. And so would that, if we were in that scenario, could Dr. Kuhn not reach out to Dr. Balgabin, at which point, you know, I don't know that it would exceed a hundred thousand dollars, because now we've taken it up. But then Dr. Balgabin rightfully could make the decision, and of course, he'd notify us, you know. And I know Dr. B is good for that. And I know Dr. B is good for that, so that's not even, you know, I don't need to spell that out. But would that cover that kind of expenditure under Dr. B's? Will our policy cover it if we have something that urgent?
That specific project that was referenced was a $100,000 project and we're budgeting it multiple years to try to get updated technology into the Title I schools. So the change for that specific incident would have now been fixed, where we would not have delayed because it was a matter of timing with our Title I roll forward when it was released by the state, getting the funds and then getting to the board. But with the new provisions, we should be fine as long as we stay in that $100,000 threshold. And spending that much time with federal funds in a very limited time looks better on us that we can get it implemented right away. Like I said, implementing with fidelity our funds.
But because it's a change, that falls into that change provision, which is 25%, yes?
10%.
Or was it 10%?
10%.
10%.
That only gives you $10,000 on a $100,000 project. But does that really solve, that wouldn't really have solved that problem. I mean, you said it was at 100,000.
You already had the TV project pre-board approved. I don't remember.
No, you're fine. You're fine. You're fine. You're fine.
I don't remember when, but this was an increase just specifically to the Title I schools in this example.
So if we ran into this and Dr. B, under our current policy, if we ran into this and Dr. Kuhn needed to go to Dr. B, is there a provision that would allow her to approve it conditionally to the next board meeting?
Correct. The emergency process that was addressed under E. And we've also, in the last year, formalized that process by having forms that go through a series of approval processes. So it starts with the director requesting it and then it goes to your cabinet member, superintendent, and if necessary, then goes to the board.
Beautiful. I'm good with that.
All right. Because I just don't want to see that happen again because then it costs us more money.
I'll also add to that, that I've gotten meetings now with most of the departments and I'm working towards making that, all of the departments on regular bases so that projects they're working on don't fall through the cracks.
Thank you. Anything else?
All right, thank you. We'll move on to policy 707, our fundraising.
Guys, appreciate it. Sorry. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cologne.
So you're good. I'm just thanking them.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We'll move on to policy 707. This is the fundraising policy. Since this policy was submitted in your board packet, we did make a couple of other suggested changes for you to consider. Sarah Lux is going to come up and talk to you about this particular policy fundraising, and we're adding sponsorships to this.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board. Thank you for taking a look at the policy. This is a simple revision to a current policy. Schools already do fundraising and various other events, and this is just simply making it so that the district falls in line with that policy. As you can see from the policy in front of you, I'm giving you guys a second to read it. But as you can see from the policy in front of you, it's just added the words "the district" and "sponsorships" into that policy. So really no substantial changes other than making sure the district falls in line. That's it.
Because I believe the original policy was for schools.
It was for schools specifically and left out the district as a whole for sponsorship events and things of that nature.
I think we have a couple of questions.
Okay. Ms. Brosmire. I just want to thank you for this change. It came up recently and I asked questions and Dr. Balgabin was very responsive. I appreciated that. And this change is a reflection of that conversation and it's very appropriate and I'm very grateful. So thank you.
Absolutely. Happy to.
Mr. Cologne.
So colleagues, one of the things that I shared with the team is I think this policy is missing a big component. And it is the increased use of things like Donors Choose. We've got, sometimes we have folks who are very well-intentioned, who create GoFundMes for projects, who may possibly use their Cash App to get monies for projects. And I want to preface this with, you know, we want to continue to encourage it. We want to encourage folks to find ways that we could, that others can bless our students. I think the challenge is that sometimes there's no accountability for any of that. A teacher, a very well-intentioned teacher, staff member, et cetera, may say, I would like to buy this for. So I'll give you an old example, and it was from many years ago. They fundraised to get a water fountain for their portable. The water fountain showed up and we didn't necessarily have the infrastructure to support that water fountain. And so it became a problem. And so I think that, at the very least, any fundraising that is done, and again, I realize we may not have the answer to this today and I'm sure there are other districts, but I think it's important that for the sake of protecting our employees, because fundraising is something that the auditors from the state come and, or our independent auditors, and we have to report back to the state, that usually hits internal funds. But if I create a GoFundMe, nobody really knows what money I've received. Now, unfortunately, we don't really have an easy way to do a lot of this. We've had instances, and I'll use a different example, where someone has created an Amazon wishlist and I support Amazon wishlist. That's great. The teacher has left one school and taken all the things that were given for that school to their new school because that was considered, I guess, personal property at that point, although it was raised with the intent of that school where they were at. And so I think, as we think about the times, and like I said, we have to find a happy medium because what we have right now, we don't have a point-of-sale system. We don't have, but at the very least, the principal should, in my opinion, be signing off on what someone is asking for, for their classrooms so that there is that sort of oversight of that. Because right now, it's sort of every man's world. And I think that there's an opportunity to address that because, you know, don't get me wrong, I don't want to see it go away. But at the same time, it's skirting the whole state. Like, nobody really knows it's happening, although we all know it's happening. And so I think there's an opportunity there. I don't expect anybody to have the answer to that. I'm hoping there's another district that addresses that and has the perfect language. But I think that that's something that's important to protect not only our staff but to ensure that we are in compliance with the law. Thank you.
Yes, so actually, I get really happy when I can give you good news, and today I have good news for that. So as part of the background of this, Dr. Evans and I have been working on a procedure that would go along with this because we agree with you. Part of that procedure would include an application that does involve signatures from designees, from appropriate designees, descriptions of what is being donated and things of that nature. So that is already in the works. That's something that I can bring to the board at a later time. In addition to that, a procedure in terms of who is asked and when they are asked to donate, which organizations and through which means they are asked to donate is also being developed. So both of those things are being developed in kind alongside this policy, and I think that may sway some of those concerns.
Ms. Goodrich.
So are we asking a teacher to get approval if they say, hey, we want to have a celebration day of everyone learned all their spelling words or whatever? And so we want, if everyone donates $5, we want that to be reported? Is that what you're saying?
So if they do a GoFundMe and they're collecting funds, I mean, it's-
However they collect it.
It's a fundraiser at the end of the day. And so that, I think that's the piece we need to work on because we don't have, I'll give you an example. So right now, we use Focus. And this is something that Dr. Cease is working on, Todd's working on. Right now, we have Focus. So when my special needs students at Daytona High are selling sweatshirts, when FFA alumni, which is not school system, they're independent, they have a point-of-sale system. I can come up here, double tap, boom, done. But the school doesn't have that. And so I have to put my name, address, phone number, the $15 for the shirt, plus the merchant fee, because it's built into it, to buy a sweatshirt. So my point is that right now, we really don't have a system to support that, how to make it easy. But at the very least, yes, I think the principal should know that this teacher's out there collecting for because otherwise I could collect for whatever I want and never send a dollar to the cause. So that would, I mean, it's fundraising at the end of the day. The law says that we need to audit internal and external accounts. They need to report the earnings of whatever within a certain time period. I don't know what the answer is, and what I encouraged them to do was we've got some folks who are real big collectors and let's get them together. And that's, and I encouraged, you know, the team, let's get these folks together and they can best come up with what is the happy medium to bring us a suggestion on this policy that would cover everybody.
And there was a suggestion that we have an official form for all fundraising done at the school site where the principal would sign. So the school, the school base would know that fundraising is going on.
And somebody even mentioned in the meeting I was in that sometimes this ends up in professional standards. And it's not because the person meant to. I mean, it was well-intentioned. But, you know, I had an example, one school where the teacher asked for headphones. And so when she went to her next school, she took the headphones with her. Well, a parent was concerned because we bought that for our school. And so we had to say, please hand them over. Because, you know, everybody starts their request with, we're a Title I school and, you know, it's well-intentioned.
So I'd like to add something there if you don't mind. Under federal program laws, when we did use money to purchase things for specific Title I schools, like one year we bought scientific probes for all of the seventh grade science teachers, but we bought them specific to the school based on the size of the school and how many teachers were gonna need to use them. Well, we had a teacher leave one school and she thought, and they were $6,000, okay? And she was like, well, that's mine and I'm taking it now over to this school. Well, we had to say to her, no, because it was actually bought for this school to be used. And even though you receive the training on how to use it, you don't get to move it to another school. I mean, this is something we have been dealing with and at times, teachers have ended up in professional standards because some have even left Volusia County and tried to take items with them. But when, we walk a fine line here. When you use your school's name that you are raising money, you know, based on I teach at, you know, ABC School and it bring, and you bring those items in when you leave, that doesn't mean that they personally belong to you. That's where we've run into the issues with it. I am happy to hear that you're working on developing some type of a form because I think there needs to be a form with approvals and things like that. But I know that, you know, we have faced this before in federal programs. And it's just, it's just this thought of the minute you put something in someone's room, they think, I mean, people have tried to take furniture even. It just makes no sense. But that's what we have faced and then it becomes a huge issue. So I, but now to what Ms. Goodrich said, there are teachers throughout the year that hold things in their room as a reward or a celebration or things like that. There's a big thing out there that a lot of elementary schools do where they do like Mother's Day tea events. And they do ask for donations for that. But that money comes in and most of those schools, it has to go in to the bookkeeper to go into the account so that then when it's spent, the receipts are turned in for what was spent. So anyone that donated to it could come in and see, yes, it was spent on the Mother's Day tea. And that is the best thing. I mean, it used to be years ago, they let us send home flyers where we could collect money as teachers for children to buy books from Scholastic. And then sometimes people didn't pay the bills. So everything typically at our, I'm not as worried about elementary schools, I'll be honest with you. It's more middle and high that this gets messy. But elementary, a school that's running correctly for their auditing, they have the money turned into the bookkeeper. It goes into like the second grade account or whatever, or the chorus account. And then they use the card to purchase with and turn the receipts in. We're safe on those cases, but this, this whole GoFundMe out there and Cash App and all that, I don't know how to control it and I'm not a big person on the Cash App. I'm being honest with you. I think anybody sending a teacher cash could be misconstrued in many ways. Go ahead, Krista.
Yeah, I just, so last Friday, I was at South Daytona and they had snow day, which was amazing. And there were students that didn't have money to buy the ice cream and there were teachers that were giving the money. How far do we take it? Where we, do we need to be documenting that a teacher donated the money? Because that's still a donation of a sort. So how far do we take it, I guess? I like the idea of coming up with how that looks and I'm glad you guys are working on it. But it just, I don't want to stop people from trying to raise money for our kids in our schools. And I'm just worried that if we make it too difficult, and this doesn't sound like it's too difficult. I'm just expressing concerns. I'm not disagreeing. But I don't want to take that away because we already hear that schools are feeling more institutionalized. And I don't, you know, I just get a little uncomfortable when I hear that we're heading in that direction.
Ms. Brosmire. I'm inclined to agree with Ms. Goodrich. And my instinct is that maybe we're better off separating the structure for the larger events from the individual schools and classrooms because that sounds like it gets very detailed and very location-specific. Where the larger events may be like proms, I suppose we could include those in district events. The larger events can be in their own category and then the classroom-specific rules would be tailored to that because they are so detailed. I would just be inclined to separate this into two different sections.
It, it sounds like we can make some definitions that may help. And I know one of the things that we're looking at doing as part of the procedure is to set a base amount. So if something is $20, is that different than something that's $1,500? And we don't want to set that amount arbitrarily. So part of the research we're doing is looking at other counties to determine what a good number and a standard number is for that, and I think that'll help as well.
What constitute an official fundraising event? What constitute an official fundraising event?
Exactly. Absolutely.
Or a sponsorship. Because recently, one of the middle schools received a $1,000 check for culinary. And so I reminded them, would they please fill out the form and send it over to Ms. Gilmore? Because even tonight on our board docs, we had, we're voting to accept the donations that came into schools. Well, when $1,000 comes in for culinary, we, we need to recognize that and it needs to be on there. But we are still struggling with some of the schools not filling out the forms and getting them to Ms. Gilmore so that they can be posted.
I've heard quite a bit of conversation about property belonging to the school or the school district. Is that something that we think we might want to add to the policy? Any property that's purchased through fundraising or sponsorships belong to that particular school or the Volusia County School District? To get away from teachers thinking that they can take things along with them when they leave the district? Just a question for the group.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
And so again, I encourage Dr. B and the team, I think we could find a happy medium. You know, we know who the folks are and if you have questions, let me know. Because I think getting their feedback and what would be, allow them to accomplish their goal yet not be intrusive enough to not, to deter people from wanting to give us, because I'm guilty, I send money all the time and somebody wants something for their class. And I, and they're good, I, no question in my mind that these are good people. I just sometimes worry, what if somebody says, well, they didn't turn it all in? They put themselves at risk. And so I would love to give them a mechanism to be covered.
So Ms. Lux, what I would like for you to do, look at what constitute an official fundraising event. Look at some, you know, neighboring districts, look at their policies. But also, let's include a group of teachers, elementary, middle, and high, along with the office staff. along with the office staff and administrators so we can, once we have a tentative plan of this is what we're going to be proposing to the board, have them review it with them and obtain their input because that plan could always be tailored before brought here to the board.
Ma'am, I think that's a wonderful idea. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. The next policy is Policy 717, Travel Expense Reimbursement Policy. There was only one change that was recommended on this travel policy and that's under Number Four, where it says all reimbursement claims for travel shall be submitted within 60 days of return from that particular travel event. There was some discussion, I believe, where we were getting asked for reimbursement five or six months after the trip had been taken. So we want to try to limit that to no more than 60 days after the trip to, you must submit your reimbursement claim. And Deetra is here if you have any questions regarding this travel policy.
I think that's a generous amount of time.
Okay, all right.
We're, I think we're.
She turned around very quickly. And the last policy is Policy 801, Public Participation in School Board Meetings. This had already come before the board a few months ago, but we had to change it or pull this policy back because there was a new case out there that's relevant to E1, where now you can address individual board members. And our policy stated that you cannot address an individual board member. So we had to pull it the last time to make it comply with the new, with the new law. And everything else remains the same.
Ms. Cologne.
And so as I stated before, when we had this discussion, I was not in favor of this change from board attorney to, from the chair to the board attorney. And so I will maintain my position if nothing else is changed on that. Thank you.
Ms. Goodrich.
Is there a reason? That you feel that way? So I just have a better understanding.
So, you know, as elected officials, it's our job to deal with the public and to address the public and to take the good, the bad, the facts of life, yes. And so I feel that it's very impersonal and very unfair. You know, as you know, sometimes public comments are beautiful and happy and sometimes it's not. And so I think that is a duty of the chair. It's what we're elected to do. And so to delegate that just doesn't seem like it's in the flow of the meeting and in good interest. Again, we've lived through the hardest times ever during COVID when it was easy, when we've had times when it was hard, we've had times where it was impossible. And so I don't know that putting Mr. Evans in that position versus us just owning it because it's what we signed up to do is the right thing to do. So that's just my opinion. Thank you.
I agree with what you're saying. What, what was the reason that we decided to make this change?
Would you like to share, Dr. Evans? I think it's to make it as impartial as possible.
Well, the chair.
There, there have been times, as Mr. Cologne said, we lived through really tough times. There were times when people were stopped. There were times when people were not stopped when the buzzer went off. We watched as it depended on who was speaking. And that's whether whoever was sitting in this chair realized it or not. You can't show favoritism to one speaker over another. Like you need to hold everybody to the same criteria. And when we lived through COVID, this thing got banged a lot. For some and some it never got banged. And so when Dr. Evans was hired and he was hired to come in-house to be a school board attorney for us, instead of us having, you know, a consultant person coming in to be the attorney, he brought this up that at the university and college level where he had served as the attorney for the Board of Trustees, that that is how they run it. And if you look at a lot of your city councils and things like that, that is also how they run it. And so we just, because he's impartial, you know, he's, he's not looking at, well, that person's my friend or I agree with them or I disagree with them or whatever. So I'm going to hold somebody to, I'm stopping you immediately or I'm going to let you continue on. And I think if you even talk to a lot of the people that have attended the board meetings, that's what they saw over the years. You know, and it's like, they knew how the feelings were, quite frankly, of where the chair stood on things by who they allowed to speak longer or they stopped from speaking totally. And so we were trying to bring some piece of, he's an impartial party, he's the attorney. And when he says stop, they need to stop. Because we've had people ignore when we have also said to stop, they have kept reading or speaking. And then you find yourself, you know, and then they immediately turn around that we're being rude and unprofessional asking them to stop from speaking. Mr. Cologne, you want to say something again?
I, I do. And so in the same policy, we have the board attorney may notify or warn speakers that their comments have gone beyond it. And I don't know that that's the board attorney's job, that's the chair's job. I mean, at the end of the day, if they go over, that's the chair's job. And I don't know that I want to put the attorney in a position where he's now saying, stop, 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 turn off the microphone. That's what we do. And thankfully, again, we've lived through the, anything that could happen that was terrible and we survived. And fortunately, we're very blessed that despite the differing opinions, 99.9% of the folks who come to our meeting are cordial and are they passionate sometimes? Absolutely. But so are we. And so I don't know what this is fixing. I think it's more impersonal. I think it's, I, I, I don't like creating drama. And so I, I think that this, if it's not broken, don't fix it. That's my thought.
Ms. Brosmaier.
I agree. I was not on the board at the time that this policy was adopted. But I agree that it is the responsibility of the chair. And if the chair is showing favoritism, I think that is a discussion that the board should have with, with the chair. But I, I'm inclined, unless, unless there's a reason to invoke some legal standard because of the behavior of, of someone who's participating or doing public comment, I do think it's the responsibility of the chair. And I realize that's not the, the change, the policy change that we're here to discuss. But I just figured since Mr. Cologne had raised it, I would weigh in too.
Ms. Thompson.
Thank you. I will say that, and I know you've handled this a lot and I handled it last time. It, it would have been easier if Dr. Evans had done it, not because of the comments, but because if someone's speaking to you, I like to write everything down that they're saying so I can look back on it. And if it's discussed later or if someone else emails about it, I have a reference point. And when you're trying to look at the time and make sure that they're getting the time and like it's getting close, it adds an extra layer to where you're not able to listen as well because you do have those extra responsibilities. So that's just another piece of that puzzle.
Brosmaier.
I can understand that. We try to make sure that we, that we make notes of, of the things that we want to try to remember. But I've also found that it's been very helpful when I have not been able to, to fully take notes, to go back and look at the video. And, and especially in public comment, to make sure that I, that I, my notes were accurate or whatever it was. So I think that's a good backup system for when we're not able to fully make the notes that we want to make while we're also actively listening.
Okay, so we need to give Dr. Evans direction on this policy. Ms. Goodrich, sorry.
If it's not imminently pressing, could we review this? Could we push this back to the next meeting so that we have a little more time to review and discuss it? Because there's more information I have now than I had before. And so I'd like a little more time to think it through and.
So we would move it then into February for, to bring it back at a workshop? Because we like to workshop everything and know that for the most part, we're settled with it before we bring it on for a vote since it's going to be a policy. So you've heard the rec, or suggestion Ms. Goodrich has made, is everyone in agreement with that?
I agree with that.
I agree with that. Dr. Evans.
So we'll hold this in abeyance until the February 2024 meeting and we'll bring it back at that time. Those are all the policy updates that I have thus far. Chair, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. So it is 1:54 and we're going to take a short recess and then come back in for Item 2.02, our Way of Work Presentation. So if everyone could be back in the boardroom at 2:15, please. Thank you. Good afternoon and welcome back. Our next item on the agenda is 2.02, our way of work presentation. Dr. Balgobin?
Madam Chair, thank you very much. I would like to ask Mr. Tom Gonzalez, who is an attorney with Gray Robinson, to come forward and share with us information and a presentation on our way of work. As you know, Gray Robinson also happens to be the firm and the body of work that we do with them for legislative affairs. And so it's a team of individuals that's well-known to Volusia County. Mr. Gonzalez has worked with Volusia County for probably more than four decades at this point in time, and throughout the state of Florida, a well-respected attorney. He represents management clients throughout the state of Florida in matters of labor relations, equal opportunity law, wage and hourly law, and also all employment and personnel-related matters. So we want to welcome you back. It's only been, what, the last time you were here during COVID, I believe, right?
Yes, ma'am.
In this room until about 1:30, 2 o'clock in the morning?
Yep.
So welcome back, and we're glad to have you here. And Madam Chair, as you know, we also are going through our recertification process for Master Board. So thank you again for being here, Mr. Gonzalez. The floor is all yours.
Thank you, and thank you for having me. And by way of full disclosure, I've been the school board attorney for Hillsborough County and also have worked with a number of school boards. So I don't, I don't come to this presentation with a, with a lack of experience and personal opinions. But I've been asked to talk about our way of work, and it was, it was nice to be sitting here, watching the board do what I'm going to tell you, and that is that the way of work is whatever a majority of this board wants it to be, subject to a really, really specifically defined system of government that's unique to school boards. And that system that I'm going to talk about and its origin is, I think, what makes you all, and that's why I wanted to do the full disclosure, because I have that prejudice, is that I think that being a school board member is the hardest legislative job in the state government system. And I want to tell you why. And I want to start with the 1968 Constitution, which has a couple of articles, one of which is entitled "Local Government." And in the "Local Government" article, the Constitution provides that there can be counties and that the governing body of the county will be the Board of County Commissioners. There's no mention of a chief executive whatsoever. It's left entirely up to the board, and the board operates under the Constitution the way they want to operate, but they do it as a body. And there's also a provision with respect to municipalities, and municipalities, it says again, that they'll have the powers that are given to it by the Charter, and there's no mention of a mayor or any other kind of chief executive. Now, I'll tell you, and you all were talking about it, the way government has gone and the need to act quickly, both the counties and the cities have ended up having chief executives, either as a mayor or a county administrator or city manager. But that's by decision of the board, and it wasn't something that was imposed by the Constitution. In the case of school boards, there is a specific provision in Article 9, and it's Section 4, which says that each county shall constitute a school district. And then it says that in each school district, there shall be a school board composed of five or more members chosen by vote of the electors in a nonpartisan election for appropriately staggered terms of four years as provided by law. And then B, and we're going to be talking about verbs, because I think verbs, I hope I won't be boring you, but it's important to talk about the verbs that the legislature has used in the context of school boards. But 4B says the school board shall operate, control, and supervise all public schools within the school district and determine the rate of school district taxes within the limits prescribed herein. Two or more school districts may operate and finance joint educational programs. But then in Section 5, and unlike counties, municipalities, and special districts, the Constitution of the state of Florida says there's going to be an office called the Superintendent of Schools. And when you read Section 5, it says in each school district, there shall be a superintendent of schools who shall be elected at the general election in each year, the number of which is a multiple of four for a term of four years, or, when provided by resolution of the vote of the electors, the district school superintendent in any school district shall be employed by the district school board as provided by general law. And that makes school districts and school governance the only instrument of government in the state of Florida that has a chief executive named in the Constitution. And what's important is what the legislature did with that, because regardless of whether the superintendent is elected or hired, it's still the same, it's still an office created by the Constitution. And it resulted in what's now 1,001.32, which is the Management, Control, Operation, and
Good afternoon and welcome back. Our next item on the agenda is 2.02, our way of work presentation. Dr. Balgobin?
Madam Chair, thank you very much. I would like to ask Mr. Tom Gonzalez, who is an attorney with Gray Robinson, to come forward and share with us information and a presentation on our way of work. As you know, Gray Robinson also happens to be the firm and the body of work that we do with them for legislative affairs. And so it's a team of individuals that's well-known to Volusia County. Mr. Gonzalez has worked with Volusia County for probably more than four decades at this point in time and throughout the state of Florida, a well-respected attorney. He represents management clients throughout the state of Florida in matters of labor, relations, equal opportunity law, wage and hourly law, and also all employment and personnel-related matters. So we want to welcome you back. It's only been, what, the last time you were here during COVID, I believe, right?
Yes, ma'am.
In this room until about 1:30, 2 o'clock in the morning?
Yep.
So, welcome back, and we're glad to have you here. And Madam Chair, as you know, we also are going through our recertification process for master board. So, thank you again for being here, Mr. Gonzalez. The floor is all yours.
Thank you, and thank you for having me. And by way of full disclosure, I've been the school board attorney for Hillsborough County and also have worked with a number of school boards. So I don't come to this presentation with a lack of experience and personal opinions. But I've been asked to talk about our way of work, and it was nice to be sitting here watching the board do what I'm going to tell you, and that is that the way of work is whatever a majority of this board wants it to be, subject to a really, really specifically-defined system of government that's unique to school boards. And that system that I'm going to talk about and its origin is, I think, what makes you all, and that's why I wanted to do the full disclosure, because I have that prejudice, is that I think that being a school board member is the hardest legislative job in the state government system. And I want to tell you why. And I want to start with the 1968 Constitution, which has a couple of articles, one of which is entitled "local government." And in the "local government" article, the Constitution provides that there can be counties and that the governing body of the county will be the Board of County Commissioners. There's no mention of a chief executive whatsoever. It's left entirely up to the board, and the board operates under the Constitution the way they want to operate, but they do it as a body. And there's also a provision with respect to municipalities, and municipalities, it says again, that they'll have the powers that are given to it by the Charter, and there's no mention of a mayor or any other kind of chief executive. Now, I'll tell you, and you all were talking about it, the way government has gone and the need to act quickly, both the counties and the cities have ended up having chief executives, either as a mayor or a county administrator or city manager. But that's by decision of the board, and it wasn't something that was imposed by the Constitution. In the case of school boards, there is a specific provision in Article IX, and it's Section IV, which says that each county shall constitute a school district. And then it says that "in each school district there shall be a school board composed of five or more members chosen by vote of the electors in a nonpartisan election for appropriately staggered terms of four years as provided by law." And then B, and we're going to be talking about verbs, because I think verbs, I hope I won't be boring you, but it's important to talk about the verbs that the legislature has used in the context of school boards. But 4B says "the school board shall operate, control, and supervise all public schools within the school district and determine the rate of school district taxes within the limits prescribed herein. Two or more school districts may operate and finance joint educational programs." But then in Section 5, and unlike counties, municipalities, and special districts, the Constitution, the state of Florida, says there's going to be an office called the Superintendent of Schools. And when you read Section 5, it says "in each school district there shall be a superintendent of schools who shall be elected at the general election in each year, the number of which is a multiple of four for a term of four years, or, when provided by resolution of the vote of the electors, the district school superintendent in any school district shall be employed by the district school board as provided by general law." And that makes school districts and school governance the only instrument of government in the state of Florida that has a chief executive named in the Constitution. And what's important is what the legislature did with that, because regardless of whether the superintendent is elected or hired, it's still the same, it's still an office that's created by the Constitution. And it resulted in what's now 1,001.32, which is the Management, Control, Operation, Administration, and Supervision. Now, you notice there's some more verbs in there than there are in the Constitution. And so you have control, operation, and supervision, but now you have management and administration. And here's what the legislature did with respect to the district school system. It'll be considered as part of the state system, because you all know that part of your obligation is the state of Florida is committed to providing a uniform system of public education with uniform funding and everything else. And part of that will be in Section 2, the District School Board, that says "in accordance with the provisions of 4B of the state constitution, district school boards shall operate, control, and supervise," those same three verbs, "all free public schools in their respective districts and may exercise any power except as expressly prohibited by the state constitution of general law." And then it goes to the district school superintendent. And you have different verbs than you have for the district school board, and these are verbs that were given by and imposed by the legislature. But it says "responsibility for the administration and management of the schools and for the supervision of instruction in the district shall be vested in the district school superintendent as a secretary and executive officer of the district school board as provided by law." Only school districts have that system of governance. And with respect to the mention of the executive officer, this is the only executive officer that's created for a school district. And again, it makes it unlike counties and cities that have to go their own way in terms of what kind of administration and day-to-day operation they want to have. And this system has been around a long time. It's been the subject of a number of opinions of the Attorney General. And basically, what it's come down to is what's in the 1996 opinion that I've included in the printouts, that basically talks about, the question in that case was, is a district school board member precluded from making recommendations to the school board regarding those matters specifically reserved for the superintendent of schools by Section 230.32 and 230.33? Those 230 numbers are simply the same statutes that got renumbered as the thousands in the current school code, but the provisions are exactly the same. And what this deals with is the operation of a school district in the context of a system that was provided going back to 1939, with, in my opinion, the imposition of government in the sunshine and the public records law, which made what you all do so hard, in my opinion. But basically, the upshot of this opinion was, on what I've got on the next page, and this is the conclusion, was that the statutes relating to the powers of the superintendent parallel those discussed above regarding the school board. Section 230.32 is a broad statute, providing the superintendent has general oversight over the district school system for the purpose of determining problems and recommending improvements. The superintendent is charged with, under this statute, with recommending policies, rules, and regulations, and standards for the operations of the district system and executing them once they are adopted by the school board. This general power is tempered by the requirement that the superintendent, quote, "advise and counsel with the school board on all educational matters and recommend to the school board for actions such matters as should be acted upon." Goes on to say "the district school board is statutorily required to adopt these recommendations by the superintendent if, in their opinion, the actions are warranted. However, nothing in Sections 230.22 or 230.23 precludes a school board member from making suggestions to the superintendent in areas in which the board member may think appropriate for comment. If the superintendent feels that these are deserving of incorporation into his or her recommendation to be presented to the board for final action, he or she may do so. If this informal suggestion process is utilized, caution should be exercised by the school board members and the superintendent to ensure that no violation of the sunshine law occurs." And that's where the job that you all do in terms of legislating comes into this. And that is to say that the Constitution, the school code, is real, real clear that individual school board members aren't given the authority that you all may think you need to get done the things you want to do, because all the powers that we're going to be talking about are given to the school board, acting as a board. Which gets me to what I was saying, is that the way of work is whatever the majority of this board wants it to be. And that's up to you, in terms of how you want to handle this thing and what you want to get done. And it's talking about the school code, and this is the last of that opinion, where it says "the statutes prescribe the powers and duties of the superintendent and responsibilities described therein exclusively assigned to the superintendent. The superintendent is directed, however, to accomplish those responsibilities with the advice and counsel of the school board, whose suggestion the superintendent may adopt as a recommendation for approval." That's different than what happens when the recommendation comes before the whole board, in which case that's when your powers are really the best and the highest they're going to be, because, as I said, a majority of the school board determines whether that recommendation is going to be, in your best judgment, adopted, with one exception, and that's personnel, and we're going to be talking about that specifically. Now, we're going to go through these quick, and I'm not going to go through these long lists that's in the statutes about the powers of the school board, because I think what's most important is that they begin with some form of what's in this statute, which is the 1,001.41, which is the general powers. And it says "the district school board, after considering recommendations submitted by the district school superintendent, shall exercise the following general powers." And then it goes on to say "determine policies, adopt rules, prescribe and adopt standards, contract sue, and be sued." And then that goes down to the general powers, which is they are to perform the duties and exercise those responsibilities that are assigned to it by law, sign students, enter into agreements, and do those things that it does as a board, which is made clear by 1,001.42, which says "the powers and duties of the district school board is, the district school board, acting as a board, shall exercise all powers and perform all duties listed below." There are no duties for an individual school board member. That's where you're free to have your opinion and express your opinion, but in terms of exercising the authority, the authority is exercised by a majority of the board, which gets us into the legislative function that's carried through, all the way through. 1,001.43, they put it, says "the school board may exercise the following supplemental powers and duties as authorized by this code or state Board of Education rule." Now, there's also statutory pronouncements with respect to what the superintendent does. And in 1,001.48, it says "the district school superintendent shall be the secretary and executive officer of the district school board, provided that when the district school superintendent is required to be absent on account of et cetera, et cetera." There's a provision that'll be made to that. But with respect to the duties of secretary and the ex officio membership on the board, that is, again, something prescribed by, as is the executive officer of the school's district, because that's what the system entails. The general powers, again, which is 1,0149, the general powers of the district school superintendent are, again, put together in a law that makes you pay attention to the verbs that are used in the statute. And number one is the general oversight, which is "exercise general oversight over the district school system in order to determine problems and needs and recommend improvements, advise, counsel, and recommend to the district school board, recommend policies, recommend and execute rules, recommend and execute minimum standards, and perform..." Recommend and execute rules, recommend and execute minimum standards, and perform duties and responsibilities as are assigned to the district school superintendent by law and by rules of the state Board of Education. So you have this system that has the over and over statement of the provisions of the statute that put the superintendent in a position where the superintendent is the one who brings recommendations, and you have a right to require those recommendations as a board, you have a right to consider those recommendations as a board, and you have a right to, when there's reason to do so, to reject those recommendations. But the system doesn't encounter, doesn't include a way by which an individual school board member, acting alone, can get any of these things done. The, again, 1,0151 is another statute that deals with the district school superintendent and the powers and duties, and the verbs are, again, that she's to assist in the organization, she's to attend all school board members, she's to keep minutes, she's to act for the district school board as custodian of school property, she's to supervise the assembling of data, she's to recommend the establishment, organization, and operation of such schools, classes, and services as are needed to provide adequate educational, and importantly, be responsible, as required herein, for directing the work of the personnel, subject to the requirements of Chapter 1012. And again, in the context of a school code, the school board has only one employee that they're required, and that is the superintendent, and then two others that are by choice, which is a number of attorneys that you all want to have, and also the general auditor, the auditor, if you want to have that. All the other employees are employed in positions that this board determines, as a majority of the board, because there can't be something to hire a position into until this board decides they want to do it, acting on a recommendation. But with respect to the hiring and the directing and supervision, that's not the job of an individual school board member, and it's not the job even of the school district, except acting through, the school board, I should say, acting through the superintendent. And the long list of powers, which is the same verbs that are used over and over again, all come down to the same thing. And I said that we wanted to talk about personnel in particular, because I think it's one of the most unique aspects of a unique system. And it's 1,012.22, and it's called "public school personnel, powers and duties of the school board." And "the district school board shall designate positions to be filled, prescribe qualifications for those positions, and provide for the appointment, compensation, promotion, suspension, and dismissal of employees as follows, subject to the requirements of this chapter." And then when you go down to A, Positions, Qualifications, and Appointments, it begins with "the district school board shall act upon written recommendations submitted by the school board superintendent for positions to be filled, for minimum qualifications for personnel for the various positions, and for the persons nominated to fill such positions." Number two is "the district school board may reject for good cause any employee nominated," and we'll get into, the next slide is going to be a statement of what we're talking about with good cause. And then it goes on to say "if the third nomination by the district school superintendent for any position is rejected for good cause, if the district school superintendent fails to submit a nomination for initial employment within a reasonable time as prescribed by the district school board, or if the district school superintendent fails to submit a nomination for reemployment within the time prescribed by law, the district school board may proceed on its own motion to fill such position." But those are the only times. So with respect to personnel, the school code envisions a system where it doesn't begin until the school board decides that there is a position, the school board decides that the position is to be filled, and the school board decides when that position is to be filled. But with respect to the filling of it, that's when you get into the superintendent, who has to submit a written recommendation. And again, this is the only statute I know of in the entire Florida statute book, that talks about the governing body needing good cause to reject a recommendation on personnel, and needing to reject it three times before they can act. And like the other things we've been talking about, the Attorney General has consistently read that and read that the way it's written, and I've given you a 2001 opinion, which involved a situation as to whether the role of the superintendent of the school board was different on something like a transfer. And did there have to be good cause to the recommendation? And the board and the Attorney General came down again, reading the unique system we have in Florida, as saying that "in the absence of a showing of good cause, the school board must accept employment recommendations, including transfers made by the superintendent." The case that was involved in that, or the question that was involved in that Attorney General's opinion, was one where the superintendent had suspended an employee under emergency circumstances until the next regular or special meeting. And the question came up as to who had the power? And again, the system dictated that what happened was, is the superintendent can only suspend an employee until the next school board meeting, because now we're not talking about hiring, now we're talking about taking that person out of the position. And so the superintendent only has the power to suspend that person until the next school board meeting. And then at that school board meeting, the school board has to decide whether or not they want to suspend that person and/or terminate that person. And that's an exclusive authority of the school board at that point, acting as a board. And that's not subject to the good cause requirement. That's something where it's a matter of governance, where the school board has to decide that. But the situation sort of, I think, illustrates the division that the legislature envisioned in terms of who has the power to do what, and when, and under what circumstances. I think that it's important that you sit there when you're talking about your way of work and the policies that you want to develop. 1,01.4205 is entitled "individuals authorized to visit schools." And it says "an individual member," and this is like one of the few times when an individual school board member is mentioned, but it says "an individual member of a district school board may, on any day and at any time of his or her pleasure, visit any school district in his or her school district." And then it goes on to say "an individual visiting a school must sign in and sign out of the school's main office and wear his or her identification badge while present on school premises. And the board, the school, or any other person, including but not limited to the principal of the school, may not require an individual visiting the school pursuant to this section to provide notice, and the school may offer but may not require an escort to accompany an individual visiting the school pursuant to this section during the visit." What's important in that statute is that it's interpreted in the context of all the other things we've been talking about. So there is no question that a individual school board member has the right to visit a school whenever he or she thinks it's appropriate to visit that school. And the person is there not to supervise, not to direct the work, but to observe. And of course, it's all consistent with the school board member or the legislator, who also had to be given the permission in terms of what's going on, is that they don't have the power to interfere with the operation of the school, or to question particular people, or to do whatever they want to do in terms of fact-finding. They're there to observe, and they're there to observe without any kind of limitation whatsoever, but they're there to observe as opposed to manage and direct. And the same kind of thinking, I think, goes into this next Attorney General's opinion, which is in 2006, which talks about a school board member requesting member records. And again, it focuses on the difference between the power of the school board versus the power of an individual school board member. And what this Attorney General opinion says is, is that as an individual member, the school board member has a right to request records, but only to the same extent that a citizen has, which is to say you do it at your own expense, and you do it with respect to those documents that are... at your own expense, and you do it with respect to those documents that are there with respect to already, in the context of already being in existence, as opposed to creating, and the opinion says that an individual school board member can't require the creation of public records, because again, it is. But the thing I want to leave you all is, is that acting as a board, with respect to the majority of the board, in terms of adopting ways of work, this board by majority vote has the ability to set those confines, they can't restrict the right of an individual board member as a citizen, but they can certainly provide for a way of having things done in a way they want to have it done by the vote. And again, the March 28, 2012 opinion is one involving a situation where an individual school board member wanted to have a town hall question and answer session on school facilities, and the Attorney General found that in that context, the individual had no right to use the school board property for those purposes, in terms of what's going on, and again, it was going back to the power of the superintendent to control access, subject to the way of work that the majority of this board wants to have with respect to those kinds of events. And it goes over into situations where the individual school board member, on any number of occasions, you know, gets asked to speak in terms of this kind of stuff and to discuss matters, and the two things I leave you with is, number one, it's most important, so that you don't get in trouble with the government of the sunshine laws, that whenever two of you all are in the same place, and the discussion that you're involved in involves things that are to be coming from the board, then that conversation is subject to government of the sunshine, and it can't be done without prior notice, without the agenda requirements that you have with respect to this kind of stuff. And when you're speaking as an individual board member, it's always important to remember that you're not speaking for the board, because no one, and frankly, not even the chair, has any authority to speak for the school board, in terms of what's going on, because the things that are being taken are going to be taken by majority vote of what's going on, in terms of the situation that's involved. And lastly, the thing I wanted to talk about, because I think it's really important, is that in light of the relative powers and authority that you all have, is that this 1997 Attorney General opinion makes real clear that individual board members don't have an attorney-client privilege when they're talking with the school board attorney or with a general counsel, because the general counsel and the school board attorney only answers to the board, which by the way, the board is the only entity that has the authority to hire a legal counsel, in terms of what's going on, but it's the board's attorney, it's the board's general counsel, and an individual talking with them doesn't have any kind of attorney-client privilege with respect to those people. And that, in a nutshell, I hope, is basically what the legislature has given us, for good or ill, and again, I just can't emphasize enough how much I think things got changed by the imposition of government of the sunshine, and I'm not saying that those are bad laws, I'm just saying that those things made it more difficult, and I think that it's worth noting that the legislature made sure that they're not subject to government of the sunshine, in terms of what's going on, but it's a difficult situation where you have a scheme that's very, very clear that individual members of a governing body, they can get in trouble violating the government of the sunshine, but they can't do anything individually either. And so I commend you, as I do all school board members, for your service, because it is really, really a tough job, and I thank you for the invitation.
Thank you. Ms. Brosmer.
I have one question about the ability to use, to hold public meetings or, you know, community chats using school facilities. Do we have a policy that addresses that? I guess that's my first question, that addresses the ability of the board, or the need for the board, to approve or disapprove the use. The reason I'm asking is because I have, last night, for instance, I attended a town hall that was held by my district commissioner, I'm sorry, district county council member, and I have to assume that the other county council members know not to show up at his meeting because of sunshine, and he wouldn't be able to necessarily hold that meeting. Do we have a policy that addresses the ability of a school board member to hold any kind of a meeting, town hall meeting like that, in a school facility?
Not that I'm aware of.
Go ahead, Dr. Evans. We have a process, but go ahead, Dr. Evans.
I don't think we have a specific policy on that, but we do have a process by which you have to follow in order to use.
Okay. Well, I can check with you about that. I was just, when I read this, I was just curious to know whether we already had addressed it or have a structure for it. So if we have a process, then that kind of answers my question. Thank you.
Mr. Cologne.
And so I want to thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, that was a great presentation, and though I think we get bits and pieces of that at FSBA, definitely, you know, sometimes when you're in the big room with lots of people, and, you know, it's late in the day and you're tired, or it's early in the morning and you're tired, or whatever the case may be, it's easy for some of this, so again, I appreciate it, it's definitely complicated, and I think for not only our benefit, for that of the public, to realize that, you know, we are who we are, not as individuals, but as a board, and that as individuals, we have, it sounds really bad, but there is, based on the law, we have no power as individuals, and so that's where the strength of us working together, as you were able to witness this morning, I mean, we, you know, our meetings do last, did, let me take that back, our meetings did last a little bit longer than other folks, but it's because we really truly do beat some of this up here, as we should, and so I want to thank you for that. I want to go to the section where you talked about visiting schools. And so my question to the superintendent, you know, we're very blessed in that we have an amazing superintendent and we have an amazing board, and, you know, in some instances, you know, we're too blessed. I don't know if that's a thing, if you can be too blessed, because, you know, there are no limitations on, you know, I could say to a principal, hey, I'm in the neighborhood, I'm stopping in, but as I hear what the law says, I guess my question for the superintendent is, is there a way that we can make this better? I don't think I've ever heard of anybody say, "Rubin stopped in, and I wasn't expecting him, they stopped rolling out the red carpet a long time ago," so that's not an issue, but as we talk about our way of work, which, you know, as you use the term, the verb, many, many times, is there a way that we can optimize that for your staff and your team to not be, I mean, again, I've never heard anybody complain, but maybe they're just not telling me to my face, Mr. McAliff.
Okay.
That Ruben just shows up, so I'm curious if there's a way we can optimize that.
So I will share with you, as you know, Mr. Cologne, and those of you on the board, I have my principal counsel that I meet with on a monthly basis, and you guys have been really good, I think, for the most part, you're visiting a school, you'll let the principal know that you're visiting the school. What was brought up, it's if we can consistently do that, and here's the reason why, sometimes principals may not be at their school that day, they're planning, and I mean, I've shown up, honestly, and I'm guilty of it, where I didn't tell them in advance, and I showed up, and they're not there. So they said, you know, in situations like that, they would like to be able to know if someone is planning to visit, so that they can at least talk to their AP or someone else, and know to kind of expect that person, that that person will be there, and whatever time that it would be, or if they need to tell you, you know what, you may not want to come today, because we're going to have a field day, or whatever the case may be, they'll let you know, but at least that communication is established. And I think I'd like to, and actually, I'm glad you're asking me, because this was just last month, just before the break, that this was one of the recommendations or suggestions that they shared with me, if we can consistently do that moving forward, just notify them that you are going to be visiting their school, so that they're aware. And it could be via text or an email, but just let them know.
I wonder if we can come up with Dr. Kuhn and his fancy...
A process?
Folks have an app or something that we could quickly just say, and, you know, sometimes it's, and I could see where that would be helpful, like sometimes, like for example, I want to speak to the food service person regarding food service, and so typically, we just call Patty, and Patty makes the connection, et cetera, but if there was a way that I could say, hey, I've got some questions for Schoolway Cafe, you know, I'd like to request a meeting or call, whatever the case may be, I wonder if there's a way, because, you know, sometimes things come up as you think about them, and, you know, also calling someone in the middle of the day, and, you know, they may be in a meeting cabinet, I know I always get them in cabinet, and so, you know, if, I think that would make it work, I think that would make it easier for us, if we knew what department we wanted, maybe, and I'm thinking in the world of rainbows and unicorns, but maybe a Google form or something that we could just, and then that can be linked to the people who need to know that we've requested to visit Deltona High, specifically their football. Now, I don't think that applies to football games, because as a public event, or any, you know, those things are public, I mean, let's be real, but I could see that as something that may be able, that we may be able to optimize, that'll be good for everybody.
And actually, that, to your point, Ms. Brosmer, actually, that would, to make sure, to ensure that we're not violating sunshine, I think having a process like that would really be very fitting to what you were discussing earlier.
And I would support the ability to do that, and the rule with sunshine is, it has to be publicly noticed and minutes need to be taken, so something like a town hall, you just have to make sure somebody's taking minutes and it's publicly noticed, and then I could be there. Now, I can't speak, or let me take it back, you shouldn't speak, so normally, you're there to listen and support the person who's doing their town hall, which, you know, we have, when we did public meetings for the zoning, for example, myself and Ms. Haynes were there, and we ensured, we said, make sure somebody writes down minutes, so that we, because it does constitute a meeting at that point, but I would be supportive of that, and so I don't think that's an issue. And so if that's something we want to bring forth, going back to, we just got schooled, it would have to come before the board to create that process by which we, you know, say, I think that's a great idea, let's all do that, or whoever wants to do it for that matter, and I would be supportive of that. So again, go ahead.
If I could, just, because it's on that topic, because I think it's worth telling you all, because it shows the lengths that the government in Florida have gone with respect to government of the sunshine, but there was a school district that wanted to have a tour of schools, an architectural tour, and so they arranged for a bus, and they got the school board members to make sure they sat five rows apart, and they had members of the press there, and it didn't do them any good. It was found to be a violation of the government sunshine, so it's just unfortunately, unfortunately, you know, the law doesn't presume y'all's good intention and good faith, and when they got, when there are two more of God's children in the same place, and they're public officials, then somebody's going to suggest that you're doing stuff in violation of the government of the sunshine. And again, which is, you know, I don't, and I've told this to legislators, but I mean, the fact that the legislature understands that that's a really tough way to operate a government, I think tells you all you need to know about how hard it is, the job y'all have to do.
And to add, I think there are also violations, there are consequences for violating the sunshine law that are specifically outlined in Florida statute, and it might be good, as Mr. Cologne and the superintendent recommended, so if you know you're going to be speaking somewhere, it might be good to let the district know, and maybe we can go over those kind of things with you, because sometimes we have good intent, but it could still be a violation.
But it could be where more than one individual is invited from the board, and the other individual doesn't know.
Doesn't know.
I think the challenge is when you're speaking, example, we do the Martin Luther King event, and so that's, we're not necessarily, I mean, we're congratulating kids on their scholarship, so that is not, you know, that, I don't think it goes that far, I think, but it's that speaking component, and so, in fact, there was ones that, I think I even walked out of the room or something at one point, when somebody was speaking, just to not give that, you know, but yeah, so, but I think, again, I think even that fancy Google form, or whatever we decide to use, may be good, because that's a way that we can communicate, and then those can be routed to, you know, if you select this box, it goes to, I'm just thinking fancy, what could make it easy?
So I'll ask Dr. Kuhn to something that's not cumbersome, that's very simplistic in nature, and then we will share with each board member to get their thoughts. Does that work for all of you?
And that's all I had.
So I, yeah, so what I wanted to say to that is, well, I think we have, in general, we give a courtesy of letting a school know when we come to visit them, I think if we created a document that was even insinuated to be required to fill out, that would actually violate the statute here, can you help with some clarification on that, because the state statute says that any individual member of a district school board may at any time, at his or her pleasure, visit any district school, so if we then created something that you had to fill out, well, I think we're following that in general, and I think that that's a great courtesy that we should continue to follow, I don't see how we could implement something when the state statute says that, so I don't want to waste any time creating something we can't implement anyway.
As a requirement, you mean?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am, I agree with that.
Yeah.
If it was a requirement, if it...
If it's just a courtesy, but, yeah.
Yeah, if it's something that's written into a way of work to saying that, you know, that you're asked to do it, but as long as it's real clear that the statute says what the statute says, and a school board member can visit that school.
I would say, there's people that are going to show the courtesy or not, so creating a form, maybe just to let someone know, but I don't know that I want to have staff do a tremendous amount of work of something that's not even enforceable.
Ms. Brosmer.
I want to go back to the town hall thing for just a minute. In addition to the county council member, who, the one I know who holds these meetings, I don't know if anybody else does, I know of several mayors who do as well, so I know that it's okay to do it, and as I said, presumably, other board members would know not to attend, but I just want to make sure that I understand correctly, that if I'm holding a meeting like that for purposes of, not of speaking for the board, but of getting input from constituents, from voters, from parents, then I have to assume that I'm not violating anything or stepping on any inappropriate toes, or anything like that, which would be the primary purpose for having a town hall, it's like doing a public comment section that is just a little more in-depth than three minutes. So anyway, I just wanted to be clear about how to do it.
You're absolutely right, as long as, you absolutely have the right to listen to anybody that wants to talk to you, at your choosing, and there's no violation, and in fact, I've go so far as, you know, you can, you can have two public officials, if I come up to two public officials and start ranting and raving, you can both listen to me and stand silent, and you haven't violated anything.
He talks.
You know, as long as, as long as you don't discuss, as long as you don't turn to the other public official and say, geez, you know, I think we ought to do this, that's when you run into it, but no, ma'am, you can, you, absolutely, that's, you know, you have a lot of, a lot of maybe restrictions on what you can do, but with respect to obligations, absolutely, you'd listen to your constituents, in terms of what's going on.
And I think you have to be very meticulous, even in listening, to make sure that you don't respond and start talking about things that are being discussed at board meetings, because once you begin to discuss those things, that could be a violation, especially if there is another board member there. But listening, I think, as he said, that's perfectly okay, but we, it's human nature to start trying to explain, and then when you start explaining and talking, that could potentially be a violation.
And the permutations are endless, in the context you're talking about, if the public official knows that whatever she says to Tom, he's going to tell another, hey, I was talking to this school board member, this other school board member, and she's for it, then that's a violation of the public government of the sunshine, when you're conveying those conversations through an intermediary.
Good, Rich.
Just some clarification. Just some clarification. So if I'm going to a fundraiser that's not school board related, and another school board member is there, and I don't know what everyone's going to, all given moments, what's the protocol? What do we do in that scenario?
Don't go off in a corner together?
Okay.
Yeah.
Deal.
Wave to them across the room, you know?
Okay. We don't have to announce that, obviously, because we always know.
Absolutely not. Because, I mean, theoretically, theoretically, if you wanted to, if you wanted to get with them and talk about anything other than something that's going to come to the board, that's not a violation. The problem's in the perception, and the fact that there are people out there who are just looking for something to say about what you're violating.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. And I would like to clarify one thing for all of you. So Sarah and her team, each week, ask Karen, Karen is our executive secretary here, to give them a list of where we're going to be and what we're going to be doing, so that they actually post it on the website, noticing that, especially in the event, two, three, all five of us are going to be at the same location. So it's very important that when we receive, you know, calendar invites to things, that we go ahead, and if we're going to be there, accept them, because they get that information a week, like they get it on Friday for the next week, so that they can post it, and it can be posted for the time that we have to post it, so the community can see where we're going to be together. Because there have been, over the years, especially during COVID, where public records requests were made of our calendars, just so people could see where were we, where were we not, were we together here? Well, if we were together at this event, what were we doing there, and things like that. And so I would just like to encourage each of you, I know sometimes when you first get it, you may not know if you're going, and it, or you may know immediately, I'm not going to attend, and you decline it. Or you may put the maybe on there. But please, to help, better help them, because they are trying to follow the law on behalf of us, please accept your invite, so that they can know and they can publish them. And that way, we don't end up in any kind of sunshine law violation. But thank you.
Thank you.
Drew?
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
You have a question?
No.
Oh, okay. All right, then, if there's no further discussion about this topic, it is now 3:06 PM. We are adjourned, and we will be back in the boardroom at 4:30 PM for the school board meeting.